Good morning, everybody. You usually start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna have Autumn set up.
At special allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do as a partner.
Oh, I see. That's why I'm here.
Good morning, everybody. Commissioner Coyle will be, I guess, a little bit late, so she'll be popping in shortly. Um, on Zoom, we've got Jude Gates, we've got Kathy Stacy. And that's it for now. I'm sure other departments will start popping in. In-house, we have Superintendent Henry, we have Autumn Newsland. We have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Pilikowski, Commissioner Godu, self, the chair, Brian Churchill. And we have a special guest here visiting us. Her name is Karen Allard, and we'll introduce her shortly. That's the attendance piece, so.
I'd like to make a motion. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we move up new business to right now.
Yeah.
Move new business.
I'll second that.
I'm moving new business up too immediately instead of waiting for it on the agenda.
Sure.
And Commissioner Coyle has joined us. So on that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So now I'm gonna introduce Karen Allard to everybody. And the nonprofit that you're associated with again is?
I am, well, I'm a school counselor for, this is my 22nd year at the Dering Cooperative School District, 19 of which have been at Ernest B. Barker Elementary School, which you remember that name, of course. And, but I'm also a registered pet therapy team with my dog Stella. And I'm registered with the nonprofit Pet Partners.
Okay. Before you intangl, would you mind actually coming to the table so the viewers could actually see you?
Sure enough.
They're hearing your voice, but they're not seeing.
So much. Thanks for joining us today. Thanks.
You may continue.
Would you like me to? Well, originally, I'm a resident of Portsmouth. And Pet Partners recognizes April 30th every year as National Animal Therapy Day or Therapy Animal Day. And encouraged us to get out and champion their cause as a nonprofit. And so I submitted a proclamation to the city of Portsmouth, and then it was transferred here. So that's kind of why I'm here. As I understand it, you guys don't necessarily do proclamations.
It's not typical, but it's not, you know, we can certainly do that. And I would probably ask Commissioner Coyle, since she's from Portsmouth as well, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I don't think the proclamation is for the end of April.
Correct.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be doing it.
Yeah.
So we're not there yet.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be for today.
Yeah.
Yeah, but thank you for coming to the conference. We really appreciate you. My pleasure.
You know, it's unusual, and at the same time, we welcome it. So any opportunity to give more information and, you know, educate the community, impact the people about various issues is always welcome. So thank you.
You're welcome. Would it be helpful if I just read the statement that I made for the proclamation? Because then it'll be easier than talking, because sometimes I get tongue-tied, so.
Go ahead.
That's easier.
You're great.
Okay. Well, I'm an active member of our community, school counselor, and Pet Partners Therapy Animal Team volunteer with my dog Stella. She's a 10-pound, five-year-old rescue. And we volunteer at local churches. Of course, my school, Ernest B. Barker Elementary School, where she's a reading education assistance animal. She provides care and comfort to students. So it's not just the social-emotional piece, but it's also the educational learning piece. And I also recently volunteered with Stella for the Friends of Anya, the Center for Grieving Children and Families. It's just assisted living facilities. It's a wonderful opportunity to provide, not only, as I said, care and comfort to people, but to just increase physical and emotional well-being. So originally, I just was explaining that it's deeply gratifying volunteer work that we enjoy doing together. And I wanted the city of Portsmouth at that time to issue a proclamation deeming April 30th National Therapy Animal Day. National Therapy Animal Day is not just about celebrating current therapy animal teams, but it's an opportunity to encourage more pet owners to consider becoming volunteers, creating a happier, healthier community through greater access to safe and meaningful therapy animal visits. After many years of challenges posed by the pandemic and economic instability, the need for therapy animals in our community is greater than ever. And through this proclamation and with your public voice, I hope you'll build awareness about the amazing impact these animals and animal teams can have. With decreasing fear, anxiety, and loneliness, to shortening recovery times and lowered perceived levels of pain, to supporting motivation and focus that helps us learn, therapy animals are scientifically proven force for good in our community, and we all need more good in our community. It would be wonderful if you could honor the therapy animal volunteers and their amazing animals, as well as encourage others in our community to consider becoming therapy animal teams by supporting a proclamation celebrating April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you.
And as I was talking to Karen before the meeting, I had mentioned that on our assisted living facility side, we actually have animals that come over for this. I think, I recall last year, there was, I think there was a pig, there was ducks, there were, I mean, it was great. And the seniors there were really, really attentive of the animals and absolutely loved it, so.
And maybe this is something we can partner with going forward for another assisted living day, you know.
I would love that.
So we could do some sort of partnership and have some comfort dogs come over. I know you're, as also a resident of Portsmouth, I know that Portsmouth has a comfort dog.
Yeah.
And so maybe we can all, it would be nice to stay in touch and collaborate, and we could work something for a particular day.
Yes, and I'm sure, 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 that New England Pet Partners, the part of Pet Partners that I'm registered with would be more than happy to also, yeah. Yes.
Thank you so much for coming.
I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, sure. Go right ahead.
Did Portsmouth deny your request?
Well, I, no, not that I'm aware of. Maybe.
Well, because you said they sent you over here.
Well, I was just notified by someone in your team that it was sent over here, and I wasn't sure why.
Okay.
So I don't know the answer to that.
And what activity will you, you know, what are you gonna do with this proclamation? Do you have an event scheduled or a photo session scheduled or anything in particular?
Generally, the proclamations are just, it's just to bring community awareness.
That's exactly right. The proclamation idea came from Pet Partners, who, you know, as a nonprofit, wants greater awareness for people who have thought about volunteering, to increase volunteering, to improve health and wellness in our communities. So you can do it through schools, through nonprofits, through, you know, the assisted living facilities, any place people need to improve their well-being, really.
So I guess I would just suggest as part of the proclamation that you do have a photo op. You know, bring in an animal here or another place.
Could I bring Stella in?
Yeah. I just think that that would be very positive for your group. It kind of coincides with what we're doing, and certainly a great idea to support.
The needing to over to the Hilton, just because of bringing animals through here.
Well.
But yes.
Or, yes.
Outdoors.
Outdoors or whatever. And it doesn't have to be here. Just, I think it would be great if you did it someplace. But I think that residents here would love it.
Well, I would greatly appreciate that, you know, because it would, you know, anything to improve the awareness. We're actually doing something at Barker Elementary School. Of course, I had a shirt made for the occasion, but thank you. But we're raising money. We're having a penny drive. And we're, Stella's there every week. She has her own Google classroom for the days that she can't be there. It's really a wonderful opportunity for kids and families to have her there. So, but anything that you can do to spread the word, that would be great.
Well, thank you so much for joining us.
And I know you're very busy. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, but if you, I know you're busy.
I think I'll head back to school. Really a pleasure. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back to the RFP opening.
Sure. I moved to award the proposal for fuel to Palmer Gas and Oil for number two oil for $2.94, $2.949 per gallon, and to Hafner's Energy North Group for diesel fuel at $3.39 per gallon, LP gas at $1.649 per gallon, and gasoline at $2.849 per gallon for the period of April 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2025, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, any discussion?
Just one very slight correction. The Hafner's Group for Diesel Fuel was 3.339.
Oh, did I misspeak?
You missed one of the threes.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
All right.
I appreciate the clarification. I do.
Further discussion?
No.
If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. No, I think it's a second agenda.
I move to approve the March 14th, 2024 public and non-public meeting minutes and the March 21st, 2024 public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second. Motion made. Second, are there any additions, subtractions, corrections?
Thank you, Leila, for getting it done, so.
The only thing I did notice, it's not a big thing, just spelling Kendra's name. Two letters got reversed, but that's. Anyway, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, so in our packets, we have Adult Nightcare Daycare payout report for January, February 2024. Does anyone want to discuss anything about that at all?
Look to me like we're in good shape.
I, the way I see it, is based on, we're gonna be, if we stay at the place we're at, we're gonna be about $2,000 short by the end of the year. So we'll have to make a transfer of about $2,000. That is assuming in June, that assumes a rate of about, a payout of about $8,500 a month. We've, it's fairly consistent. We had, the month of January was $8,515, February was $8,415. So that puts us at relatively, like, this is lawyer math, $2,000. Lawyer math is $2,000 at the end of the year. That would, which I don't think is overall, we, you know, I know that Commissioner Godu and I, we're the sort of in favor of keeping to push people into the program. And I know you had concerns about where we were going to be financially, but we're really, we're tracking pretty well, and I think everything will be pretty good by the end of the year.
Yeah, I'd like to just ask Jason Smith, because we applied for a pilot program where we're getting quite a bit of money. So where are we with that? Because we may not have to move 2,000. We could use some of that program. Jason, can you update us on that?
Absolutely. We have, and I'm sure Chuck can also chime in as well. As far as recruitment efforts go for exploring those positions, we've been working with human resources. We just had our, now, mind you, that it was just approved, I believe, last week by the Executive Council to spend the funding. But with that being said, internally, we've been putting processes in place, working with human resources on job descriptions. In addition to that, we've also been looking at software system, and we are in the process of looking at that contract. We've already reached out for marketing initiatives to support individuals about this program. And we've also had a meeting with each of the adult day programs to support and tell them about the initiative, and they're all very excited. So we're just building the infrastructure. We've already requested that they submit their admission criteria and application process so that we're on the same page. So we're continuing to move along. I just had a conversation with Allison, and I believe that from human resources, that the job descriptions will be finished up here shortly. And then we'll be looking at moving forward with system process. So we're right on target to keep moving, so I hope by next month we'll be moving forward.
Very good.
And so just to clarify, I just, maybe I missed it. Are some of these funds available to us if we have access even more than the $2,000 to support the adult daycare? Is it appropriate to use these funds for them? I think it is.
So the requirement is for the grant program is anyone that is duly certified, duly eligible and accepted under Medicare and Medicaid, which most of these individuals that are current, that the county is supporting, are duly certified.
I think.
Okay, so we're in good shape.
We are, I think, almost exclusively all the residents from, all the days of care for Silverthorn are all Medicaid. So though, certainly, we might have to do some more shifting of, not we're supporting the individuals utilizing it, but I think, but the good news is we can, because it's gonna take a bit of time to flesh out access to that money. And I guess, to the extent that things don't all line up, we don't have a ton of money to move to support the current program through the end of the year. Worst-case scenario, that we don't have access to those resources by the end of fiscal.
I don't think 2,000 is something that we can find if we needed to. So either way, we're in good shape.
And may I just also add in that there's been a change with Silverthorn with their executive director. Maria is no longer at that community. So I'm not sure who will be replacing the leader there, so more to come with that. So we may see some changes with partnership and individuals coming to the county requesting support.
Okay, great. We're gonna go to surplus equipment requests.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 288A and declare a higher lift from long-term care services surplus with the item to be discussed.
Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded, discussion on this motion?
Just for the, for the public, it's just that lift is no longer functional. So just information for the public. They're watching it on YouTube.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Payroll?
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,367,571.83 for the period ending March 23rd, 2024.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Just wanted to add that it's right in line with our payroll expenses for the last four periods, and yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we're on to reports. Any commissioner updates that anyone wants to talk about?
Sure, I have.
Commissioner Godu?
A couple of things. First of all, I was fortunate to attend the ribbon-cutting of the hospice rooms that Jason and his team and the designers have done a fantastic job at making it a comfortable space. The event was well-attended. I think everybody's excited about it, and I'd just like to congratulate the whole team who are doing such a great job on that project. The second thing is, I attended a trade show, and I bumped into a placement company who claims, who claims they can find us LNS to come to work for us at a commission rate. I'm waiting to hear from them. I still, I have my doubts that they'll find people to place, but I'm actively searching and maybe have a resource. Autumn, I think I'm gonna call on you if I, if I do get some phone call. See if you can come join on the Zoom call, just to see, ask some questions to see if they really are going to be able to fulfill some of our needs, but we have so many needs open. I figured whatever resources, they were based on the North Shore with Massachusetts. I told them where the employment was. They seem, could be just a salesman. We don't know. We'll see.
Good. Commissioner Coyle, would you have anything?
Oh, just how, I was just going to also say how wonderful the ribbon-cutting ceremony was on Monday, but more significantly, and the ceremony itself was lovely and so highly attended. It was really, really fantastic to see so much support in the community. And to me, it just reveals, one, that, how much need there is. And also, just in terms of what was the finished product, was just beautiful and just gives so much dignity and access to family to support loved one. The rooms were so thought, well-thought-out in terms of design to really accommodate family members being with a loved one. And really credit to Jason and the whole team, not Jason and Jude and everybody at, in the complex for creating these beautiful rooms for people at end of life, so.
Yeah, I unfortunately missed it. I had clients coming from upstate New York to pick her home, so couldn't make it. But I was very fortunate enough that Jason toured me through a couple of times in the previous months, and I agree with both commissioners, the rooms came out fantastic, so good luck to everybody. I also want to say that I, Commissioners got an email from Gallagher. There was some discussion about certain things with insurance, and you've probably got, I hope that both Commissioners got the email.
I didn't see it.
Leila did send it out.
What? What are you?
The threes, the, oh, I'm sure you, I'm sure you've all seen it.
Do you want to, can you go into detail about?
I can go into detail, yeah, that'd be fine. So when we were talking to Gallagher, we were told that the insurance, health insurance had gone up significantly. And one of the drivers were, was not necessarily employees at the county, but it was more spouses. And so there was some talk and discussion about what we could do to lower those costs. And so Gary, is it Gary?
It is Gary.
Gary from Gallagher sent out a three-page memo on some options that we can look into to help lower costs. That's number one. I'll look at my email. I could have sworn that I saw it sent out, so. But more importantly, I had a pretty detailed discussion with him on the phone, and while it's not something that can happen overnight or quickly, Gary had mentioned a couple of different programs that we could utilize to help offset some of the costs for the county's healthcare. Now, I've been here a little over three years, and each year I've been told, well, next year it may get better, next year it may get better. It's not. It's still a high increase of cost. So the program that Gary had mentioned to me, he gave me a link, I did share that with Allison, and we can go into more discussion later.
Are you?
It's a really interesting.
Are you talking about, what are you talking about specifically from Gallagher?
Ways to offset some of the?
No, I know, but you were saying to, with respect to the spousal surcharge, is that what you were saying?
Right, so there was one that said, one of the ways that we can control costs is do a spousal surcharge. There's also, in the sheets, there was also a.
But he, with respect.
Hold on a second. There was also a mention of, and I'm not recommending any of these programs. I'm just saying what was shared with me was exclusion of spousal on the health insurance if they can get it from their own jobs in the private sector. Again, those are just some of the ways that you can help control costs. But, and again, like I said, I'm not advocating for or against. I just think it's something that needs to be discussed. We can look at, we can look at all the details, but more importantly, the new program, which there's a lot of detail in, and it would take some time to get, to drive into the details to see how it would work, to basically educate people or employees on how it would work, really, really interested me. And I had asked Gary to send some more information. He did send me a link. I did send it to Allison, and it's something we should probably discuss, because I think it's really a win-win, but anyway. That's what I want to say.
Discuss what the?
There's a, there's a new program that you could utilize.
No, yeah, of course. We were discussing, we had the meeting and discussed options. And like, for instance, with respect to the spousal surcharge, Gary was discouraging of that because of the implications for so many, so many of our employees. And also, when you looked at that spreadsheet, it was, there are very few, when it, looking at how many people, how many, you know, providers or employers utilize a surcharge or spousal surcharge or don't allow spouses or families on to access those, it's like, at like 10%, like a very small margin to such thing. With respect to what plan we go with and sort of some of the other things, I think we started those discussions at the last meeting, and obviously we'll continue those discussions.
Right, right. And so I believe the, I believe the number for the spousal surcharge was like $1,200 a year, I think is what he referenced. But again, as, you know, stewards of the taxpayer, I think we should look at all options, all options, whether you agree or not agree, to hold some of these costs in line, because, you know, a 20% increase is high. But anyway, again, we can get into further detail. Nothing's gonna be, no major changes now. I just want to let you know that I did talk to Gary, and the program that he spotlighted, which could work, I see as a win-win, and I'll let, I'll let, you know, Commissioners and we'll get those details to make their own determination whether they feel the same way, but anyway. That's what I got. So let's, we've got to go to offer and grant application discussion. Chuck, did you want to?
We had, we got the application.
Oh, yeah.
For childcare. The issue here is, there was a new, a application that came in in December for, by the Lundyary Presbyterian Church for, related to daycare. They want $25,000 for startup cost for full-time daycare. My concern, I'll just chime in, to the extent that, my concern here is that when I reviewed the application, it doesn't really tie, tie to COVID well. They're starting a new, they're embarking on a startup program, and my concern is I really didn't see the connection between COVID impacts and starting a full-time childcare program.
I read the application as well, and I did see a connection. What they claimed in the, in the application, what they indicated, was that their daycare program that they had going on was crushed during COVID because of lack of money, lack of people, you know, losing jobs and, you know, out of work and a multitude of things. And the program was decimated, canceled. So the reason it's a startup is because they're trying to start up over again after they had, you know, had this loss. So this is seed money to help them get it going again because of the losses that they incurred. So I do see a COVID connection, and I think we have money for this. And I think we should give them something, is my opinion. It was handwritten, if you're looking at the section, there was a handwritten section that specifically addressed how it related to COVID, yeah. And I, because I was questioning the same issue, like, how does this relate to COVID? And then I read that, I said, okay, there is a connection to. I said, okay, there, there is a connection to the COVID relief and I, from my standpoint, I think it's appropriate.
Um, alright, so, I, I tend to, to agree with Commissioner Coyle on this one. I don't necessarily see the tie-in to COVID. You know, COVID was twenty nineteen, we're five years beyond that.
Um, did you read the section?
Yeah, specifically the part that says, what are you gonna do if we give you the money? We're gonna do plumbing, security fixtures and furniture.
No, the, the part that said what happened, how would it relate?
Oh, I understand what happened, um, but these programs are paid by people that have kids, if they're not paying into the system. Some reason or another, there's gonna be, I, I don't think that that's necessarily COVID-related people back or. It's just.
Well, now they are, but it got killed because of COVID.
So you said your opinion, I'm saying my opinion, it's, you know, every time I have to open my mouth, they'll have to disagree with me for some reason, but. Um, so I don't really s- I don't see the tie-in, um. Uh, and I'm certainly wouldn't give twenty-five thousand.
Chuck, no, I wasn't thinking that amount either.
Okay, what, how do you, I did, I mean, I assume you looked at it too, what, I mean, looking at the description of the qualifications. And your, I, and I, I'm asking, reaching out to you in the sense of. You have a much better handle on the requirements for qualifications than, and.
Okay, so in my opinion, it would meet the threshold for negative financial impacts during COVID, which. One for years, and as far as what they would use the money for. That's a separate thing, just that they can't use it on certain things, but as long as they, if they're doing a nonprofit financial assistance, as long as they. Technically qualify for negative financial impact during COVID and they meet that threshold. It's not that they have to use the money towards COVID-related things, it's more of a restriction of what they can't use the money on if they're given it.
Okay.
But as, as far as that for a rare.
Okay.
Under that expenditure category.
Do we have any concern about separate, I mean, without putting anything, just separation of church and state?
I, I kinda thought about that for more, but, but new generation technically. Which is even a, not a county special, the Catholic charities is behind that.
It is?
Yes.
That's not.
So, yes, so.
So, do you think that there's any concern about it with respect to?
I think for the function of it, I don't believe that they're saying that that's restricted to only members or only yet to be of a certain faith. I don't.
No, I don't believe that was the case.
No, I don't.
And I don't think that they would restrict.
One of the quick things only. That I noticed as well, um, and maybe Commissioner Coyle can chime in, cause I don't know if I. Recall when we first set this up a few years ago. We made sure that they weren't getting any other, um, any other monies from government and here it says that they. Did get a loan for a PPP program and they didn't receive money, so I don't remember.
Well, we were, when we were starting this, we were looking at amounts, almost everybody got PPP at the beginning, so now, we, the. Uh, frankly, I viewed twenty-one thousand as relatively small compared to what we were seeing, I mean, we saw. Like the YMCA's or something getting hundreds of thousands of dollars, I mean, I'm talking big money. And so I don't, to me, the, it doesn't turn on the twenty-one thousand because I think that's relatively small relative to. Uh, the PPP that went out and, and this amount would be consistent with something we would. Uh, that we would cover, I mean, we were not excluding prior, um, awards based on this level of. PPP award.
I, I, I think it said in the, the description of the programs that we would give preference to those that receive little or none.
Yes, and in the grand scheme of the PPP, fairly low.
That was small.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, 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 we didn't finish that.
No, no, it's fine.
Uh, I do have a concern on page twelve, where it says, um. Due to the pandemic attendance at KBC was not possible and preschool closed. Consequently, parents and guardians did not pay tuition. So if the parents who benefit from this childcare are not paying tuition. My biggest concern is we're gonna give them this money and nothing's gonna change, I don't, I don't see this as.
That was due to COVID.
Yeah, wow.
So they didn't pay because they didn't have the money.
My concern is that we're gonna give them this money and people are not gonna pay and that's the only concern I have.
Well, I think the, um, the, what, I, I didn't read it that way, I read it as they were not paying. They're not paid tuition, they didn't have money coming in because the facility was closed, not that they were not paying. I actually am gonna change my position because I, my concern, I had twofold concerns, one with respect to whether this was a qualifying. Um, cat expenditure, you know, qualifying COVID-related. Uh, circumstance and two, the ca- the concerns about separation of church and state and I think Chuck, uh, you. Um, alleviated those concerns, we still have some money in there, I, you know, I don't think. I, it's unprecedented that we gave the maximum request here and I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate, but I feel. You know, again, we have this money to help our community and if it qualifies, then, um, we should given the range. I'm, I'm in the range of where we've been giving all along, somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars.
I, I was thinking ten thousand dollars and it's probably our final award because in the, in the reason. It's lasted this long is that we didn't address it and they did send in the application in December, so. To me, I, I would be in favor of a ten thousand dollar award.
Alright, so.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, allocate ten thousand dollars, award ten thousand dollar grant to the. Londonderry Presbyterian Church, uh, childcare as it has been applied for to the county.
I guess I, with the caveat that there's no exclusion on utilizing, uh, the childcare facility based on feet. Because that's what.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't, I didn't read into that.
I didn't, but I would like that as a friendly amendment to the award, cause that way that alleviates any concern that. You know, that is just open to the entire community, we don't, there aren't enough childcare facilities, I mean, all that is true, so. Um.
Agreed.
With that amendment, I would second.
So we have a motion, and so, any further discussion? And since it's the last one, I guess I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll go along with it, if Chuck thinks it's, uh, it's okay. Then I, I'm good with that.
Yeah, if it qualifies.
In my, my vision.
Yeah.
Alright, so on the motion.
I.
Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I vote yes. Alright.
With the amendment, yeah.
Right, I'll, I'll have Emily reach out and make sure that's mentioned in the communication.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, so where are?
Uh, we are on. I'm going to approve the contract extension for Neptune uniforms for an additional one-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, but the three and a half percent. Industry-wide increase as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, this discussion?
Just to the extent that the increases, when it, we described it as industry wide, wide, it's industry-wide, so. Um, it's just consistent with inflationary increases and.
It's consistent anytime we've worked with them and their contract, it's been the same.
That's the same amount as the sheriff's.
Also, it's, I think good to, eh, to the extent that we're. Stay, have the continuity of a provider of uniforms, that makes it easier for people.
Realistically, the ones in the, in the proximity, you can take somebody down to now, we, uh, sized up, measured and they'll tailor right there, there's not a lot. Place up there to do that.
Okay, so then the increase is reasonable. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
About yes, Prime Care contract extension.
We're actually, this is just, um, gonna be a discussion for now, um, do we wanna take this up now or table it and?
You can, you can, so you can choose to do whatever you wanna do right now, I mean, I'm going to discuss it real quick.
You're sure.
So, our contract for, uh, Prime Care is coming up in, ending in June. Then normally, we would go with an RFP because it is a big contract, but that being said. We're gonna need to go in RFP next year with building opening up because we're going to need, uh, nursing staff at the new facility. So that is gonna be a much larger RFP and, and change into that contract. So what I've asked Prime Care to do is to extend this contract for one year, um, so that way we could. Focus on the RFPs next year when I know exactly how much we're gonna afford, a better idea of what I might need for coverage inside that new facility. And obviously, um, staying in contract with things that change or anything else, anytime we've extended with them, it's always been. Some sort of price increase, it's about three point five, again, percent increase. Or of course, for, of their contract for a year, which is about two hundred thousand dollars, um, more. And, um, for this extension, but there is a couple of things that we can talk about. Um, one is. I can put straight up in the budget, which it is right now, when you have the budget tomorrow, it'll be in there. Um, two, I can work with Chuck and Prime Care and find. How much of our contract qualifies for opioid abatement. Uh, and pay, and take some of this money out of the opioid abatement, not necessarily hitting my bottom line budget. That is an, an option, uh, if that's what you want us to explore. Uh, I'm more looking to, if you want to devote today or not, just that you're willing to do the extension, um, so I can keep, continue working with Prime Care. Um, and then if you want us to figure out funding or, or whatever you wanna do, but. Uh, it ends in June, wanna be able to tell them we're gonna extend this, we can work through the process, or. If the commissioner desires to do a full RFP, then I need to get going into a full RFP now.
I'd be happy to weigh in, um, we have a good relationship, as always. Uh, I, we have a great, we have a really good working relationship with Prime Care to try to change that at this point, um, and go after. Uh, go to, out to RFP at this point, especially where we have that and, um. And all sorts of, um, a really good working relationship and that. I mean, we are going to expect increases given the increased cost of, I mean, they're having, they have the same challenges with respect to. Getting nursing and staffing too, um.
And it makes clear that I told them I will go RFP next year because of the building, so they're, they understand I have, I, that is a duck we have to.
And I think strategically actually is, it's very sensible to. Extend the contract a year now and then go out to RFP when we have the new building, I mean, that just, this is. To me, it's like the most logical and sensible way to approach this, so, um, I would, I personally didn't support the contract extension and. Um, if, it's like, we're just gonna see a lot of. Inflationary increases on contracts.
Anyway, I would say is that, yes, Jason, let's work together, you know, whether it's them or someone else. As far as anything that's MET related, should go through a special, there's multiple allowed uses under the fourteen categories or whatever. And also, it's not like we're supplementing with federal funds because opioid abatement stuff is, is not a federal grant.
Correct.
It is not, it is settlement funds, it's an appropriate use of those monies.
How much money do we have in there, do you remember?
Uh, probably, we're, it's over one point two and there's.
Two point two.
Like seven pending.
Well, that's with the two point two million that's.
Yes, so, so.
So you're gonna.
So forecast it out, you know, probably within about a year, year and a half, there can be four million.
In light of some of the other, um, budgetary considerations for you, um, in the, with the Department of Corrections. I would support trying to look at, um, using opioid abatement, I mean, what, this is not a conversation. I guess for purposes to today, it seems to me, we just need to, um. Give you the marching orders to pursue a contract extension, right? And I don't know if we need a formal motion or we could just have a discussion, because the formal motion will come when we have the actual.
I can get your contract.
Yeah, contract.
Yep.
I.
I, I would, I, I agree, I think that we should, uh, try to extend and see what that extension actually looks like. I'd be more in favor of that than go out for RFP right now.
I don't, I don't mind extending, but I need to know what that number is.
It's about two hundred thousand.
It's a hundred ninety-nine thousand.
Oh, I was looking at the motion.
No, it, it's in the packet.
Hundred ninety-nine thousand nine sixty-eight.
We have the.
It's in there, but, but this is just a letter, that's why it's not a contract, it's more of a, it was a discussion.
Alright.
To the extent that when we bring this back for, I mean, the con- once we get the contract.
Yeah.
Lined up, as we talk about budget, then maybe we can, maybe in the course of talking about your budget, then we can. Discuss.
Because I had two, I have a question, one, we can see just, uh, this extension, how much that qualifies for opioid abatement or. Chuck, I'm getting there, man, you're taking my thunder, or we look at the totality of the contract in total. And we look and see what portion of that contract can be allocated towards the opioid abatement, which might reduce the cost of. That contract per se to the county, taking it out of. I get that, Chuck?
This. Reduce the impact to the general fund.
Yes. I wanna make sure you're okay with us taking, look at the totality of the contract.
Sounds like all commissioners are on board.
Okay, cause that would, that might change some things.
Right, well, I mean, we know that there's gonna be, we have to deal with the box truck issue. For instance, and other things, so, in the.
Well, coming down the road, all that opioid abatement money, cause that, again, like, the, the gun was built awful because of. Uh, our section, uh, the federal money, cause it, it hit the, for opioids, all kinds of stuff. So the extension of, we have probably a program person too in medical, a lot of this stuff could be hit out of the opioid abatement, which could cover the, the. Not come a general fund for quite a long time for this county, before you, and then you can make a plan of slowly absorbing it.
Right.
Before you get to the end, or however you wanna do it, but, um, we can definitely start looking now.
Yeah.
I think we should try to do, like, a, I mean, and as part of this, and maybe, I think it, to me, I'm like. What I hear is we need to have an opioid abatement committee meeting, like, to tweet, because. Uh, we haven't had one in a while, I think it would be beneficial to have one and then talk a little bit about strategic planning. Not just for how we triaging this particular budget cycle, but how, like, how much if we're utilizing. How are we gonna transition over the next five years or ten, like, whatever.
Well, yeah, long range.
Long range planning.
So I'll plan, uh, I'll put up for the eighteenth after commissioner meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighteenth, that gives a couple of weeks. Mary wants a brief.
Oh, yeah.
Recession.
Absolutely, yeah. It's.
Eighteenth after.
That's the goal.
Could we say eleventh?
That's his.
Whatever.
Thing should be okay. And if you can do eleven, eighteen, as best as possible.
Alright, we're just gonna take a quick, uh, minute break here, so Commissioner.
I have my marching orders, so we're good.
Alright, great, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't even get.
I did this contract.
We're gonna move on. We're gonna move to, uh, line item transfer facilities.
I moved to, uh, I'm sorry, I have to turn my page. I moved to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of twenty thousand dollars dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from rehabilitation and nursing center fuel to rehabilitation and nursing center electric, as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Second.
Both have been made and settled with this question.
Do we, why is there, um. Such a difference in our, well, why is our electric, uh, do you know, Jude?
At the end of the season last year, we replaced the two main meters at the jail. And so, the nursing home nets, what the other buildings are using. Uh, uh, you know, we take out the sub-meters and we were sort of making a stab at it at the end of the year. Fortunately, we had it in fuels, it was a nice.
I was just gonna say, I assume we're in good shape because it was a milder winter.
Yes.
We helped us tremendously in terms of fuel and cop. So it kind of ate for itself with the meat, that's great.
Hopefully we get the soul on line quickly.
Thank you, I know, I know.
On motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you. I moved to authorize reallocation of nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars from the Department of Corrections Security Access Control to Department of Corrections Roof Repairs. As recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion number two.
And I moved to re- authorize reallocation of thirty-eight thousand three hundred dollars from Department of Corrections HVAC glycol replenished to Department of Corrections. Roof repairs as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, so Jude, on the, we're taking from the glycol line?
Yes, we did that work in-house and we saved a fortune from having outside contractors do it. We kinda had to, cause we had that field two bundle. It was an emergency situation, but everybody dove right in and they took, they took care of it, so. We have that money and we're trying not to put money in the budget next year for roof repairs.
And I just, I appreciate your team so much, Jude, for get, I mean, think about, this is big buck savings. Uh, based on all the work of your team, so thank you so much.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Human resources.
Yeah, I moved to approve the bid waiver request in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars for the purchase of Neo. Gov trap utilizing category three point two of the Arbor Project funds as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I do. Just a couple of things, one, um, how, what is the ROI on NatGov? Like, how many, how many, uh, I guess to. Like, how many, how many, uh, I guess to. Be clear, how many candidates have we found as a result of using this program?
Sure, so it's our full applicant tracking system, so every application, any candidate that I've spoken to, I invite them to apply through there. It's the only way that we receive applications, even through Indeed, I have it set up to have them go to the NeoGov system to actually apply. So it's the only way that we receive applications and hire people, cuz we do our onboarding through that system as well. So this attract software would not necessarily replace what we currently have, we would still have the applicant tracking system, the onboarding. But it will enhance the system by giving me another tool for recruiting as well.
You think only, I mean, what's your, you really, is this something you would like, this would be very helpful?
Yes, I, I, so I, when I brought it to Alison, I was very excited about it, because basically, this will allow me to track success of specific. Um, advertisements, job fairs, QR codes, whatever it may be, but much closer than I previously have. Um, that and it will basically pull every recruiting tool that I have into one place. So as of right now, I have some candidates that are sitting in emails and I have some that I met through job fairs through. Um, Indeed, interviews, et cetera, so I have. Many different places that I have to go in order to touch base with people, however, with this system, I'll be able to pull them all into one place. So that I can um. Recruit more effectively and more concisely, so it basically puts everything into one place for me. So let's say, for example, I'm at like a UNH job fair, I have a specific QR code for that specific job fair. That QR code, I can track the analytics, so I can see how successful that job fair was. This even goes further if I put a QR code on a bus, for example, like our county bus, right? I could track the success on how many people are scanning that QR code and putting in their information, so helps you track the success of that. And then further, I can say, hey, NeoGov Atract, I want to reach out to this specific pool of candidates every four weeks about this position. I can put tags on accounts to say, um, you know, this person, the pay rate was too low, you know, I'm gonna make sure that NeoGov Atract reaches out to this person. Come July first, if we have any changes in pay rates, so just kinda helps automate the process so that I can be more efficient.
Yeah, and I like the fact that it's data-driven, so you can. Drill like that idea to.
Yeah.
Can spend money where we feel that it's get, we're getting the biggest bang for our budget.
It will also expand the candidate pool for public sector. Folks that are looking, cuz right now we don't, this NeoGov is a public sector. So anybody that's out there that's applying for public sector jobs pretty much goes into NeoGov, but we don't have that portion of this. And now we'll have access to all of the pool of uh, populations. You sold, you sold me on it, I was a little skeptical about the name of yourself.
About it, yeah.
And my second question is with respect to use of ARPA and budget going forward, so. Um, obviously, the, the startup cost with training is like uh, twenty grand-ish. Um, again, blair math, um, but uh, it looks like it's gonna be twelve thousand dollars annually for the software, so. Is the plan to use, is your request to use ARPA this year? And then, when would the next, would you put it into the budget going forward, or would it make more sense? And when is this gonna start, like, if we say yes today, or is it planning to?
It implements tomorrow, just has to just.
Okay.
Run off tomorrow, so I wanted, because it was a new system. What I wanted to do was run off the ARPA funds this year, so we could actually see what the return on investment is before I then add it into my budget the following year. I wanted to utilize the budget uh, to ARPA fund so that we could use it and not wait till the budget cycle to July first. Um, and I did talk about it with Chuck too.
It's gonna expire in March.
The. Uh, yes, I'm asking, I think I asked this to go through the twenty-five.
Okay, for the whole, okay, so that twenty thousand, it takes us all the way through and then you go, okay. I'm sorry, I, that was my oversight, I guess I missed that in, that was my fault, I'm sorry. Stupid question.
Also? Further discussion?
Is that, that's just the one yet?
Alright, so.
So that's. So that's just for the one year, I wanted to go right through the fun now until.
This was.
So it's like fifteen, sixteen months?
No.
Were you looking to test at first, see if you were gaining anything, but they come back before the end of this calendar year? And then get under contract, get the funds obligated in business success.
Right.
Before twelve thirty-one twenty-four, cuz that's deadline for obligation, performance period is the end of calendar year twenty-six.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think it was more like getting the initial, oops, sorry if I'm speaking. Get an initial approval, test driving, if it's success, then come back to the board to add the program like extended that a higher dollar amount to cover. Here is out further, but so, so more funds could get obligated by the end of calendar year.
So at this point, we can only. I guess my preference is to put it into going after, you know, I guess the beta period, I mean. The test period to put it into the budget, because you know, we're not going to have ARPA forever, and I'd rather just like get it properly into the budget. This says the annual service contract is twelve thousand six sixty-four, so again. Is the. If it implements April first. Then the test period is gonna, it's gonna end at the end of March, and then. April, May, June, is the idea that we'll just continue with those three months, like do a contract extension for three months using ARPA? Do we?
That was the goal.
And then put it in the budget or?
Yes.
Still use ARPA?
Yes.
I, I, I'm confused, nineteen thousand dollars, what period of time does that cover?
Twelve.
Is that twelve months?
Yeah, that was.
And, and we got ARPA money for that, or that's the proposal.
Right, we would start at April first to do it, cuz that's the start of the month, so we'd start running it April first.
So can we, do we have an option to sign up? So that it would expire on June thirtieth, so it lines up with our fiscal year, that way. We're talking about the budget and otherwise, we're gonna have a shortfall that we're gonna be adding in next year for the.
That's, that was what my concern was, like, I'd rather just put it on the fiscal year cycle, so if we, you know. If the test period ends at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, be, I mean, it sounds great, sounds like would be beneficial, but if a full test. Let's run it all the way to June thirtieth, twelve twenty-five.
So times.
Next or four.
Plus here, I'm gonna just amend the motion accordingly to the dollar figure, thanks, hold on. If you just give me a minute.
Yeah.
Just use your lawyer math.
This one, I think I need more, um, the text feature. See. So. The upping. Oh, so is that fourteen seventy-one in addition to the sixty, no? I'm just, give me one second. No, okay, I agree, so um, I'm gonna uh, make a motion to approve the bid waiver request in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. For the purchase of Neo Gov Atract utilizing category three point two of the ARPA project funds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Uh, second. Second.
Okay, discussion?
Uh, I, I just wanna discuss your lawyer math, that's all. I, I took this number divided by twelve and multiplied times fifteen.
It's only, it's not the full, it's the twelve six six four, cuz that's the contract cost, the sixty, six thousand six hundred and sixty. It's the.
One-time fee.
One-time training fee.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
It's a.
The twenty-two thousand covers.
Eleven, it would only be an increase of like thirty-three hundred, because we're a little less thirty.
Like one sixty-six. Chuck agrees, I'm, I agree.
With my number.
Alright, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
I got it right, yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Even my lawyer math.
Twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Yes. Um, I will do approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash four four for the Department of Corrections employee K A. As recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, exception request.
I moved to, sorry, I moved to approve an exceptional request to personnel policy seven dash four for a long-term care employee E W as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded, discussion on this one? If not, I'm going to motion, Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes, uh, long-term care, another exception.
I moved to approve and accept a request to personnel policy seven dash four for a long-term care employee K M as recommended by the Human Resources Manager.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes, position repurposed, long-term care.
I moved to approve a repurpose for one LNA position, uh, licensed nursing assistant position to one. Agency staffing specialist effective July first, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
I was a little bit curious about how this was all, sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, uh, how this was working out, it seems like we got a different kind of employee. Are we moving something from union out of union, I, I, I just, could you just give me the?
So we have a tenth clerical position right now that we hired Riley Fonzo, um, she has been working between both departments. Um, she resides over there, I do her timesheets and stuff like that, but she's providing the support. This position, this function of hiring agency was done by multiple people over in the nursing home. And we had been hiring agency people pre, uh, pre-pandemic. And then it just escalated, it blossomed into something we never thought it would be, so um, we, what we did was. Those two people are supposed to be focused, or three people are supposed to be focused on their functions, their essential functions, and this dwarfed into them maintain, trying to maintain it. So it was set up by three or four different people, so, oh, we ended up hiring a tenth person to try to come and get it um, established under one kind of roof. Um, and allow those people to go back to the jobs that they're doing in the nursing home, the clinical elements and administrative elements and stuff. And this person had just been solely focused on the agency staff, bringing them in and out. Most of their contracts are thirteen-week contracts, so they're coming in, coming out, there's occasional uh, opportunities for. To extend people if they work out, but overall, um, in my outline, they have hired. We've hired over, um, I think we said. Over two hundred and forty or so, um, in the last February first period through uh, February twenty-ninth period, a hundred and thirty LNA's. And fifty-nine nurses, that's on routine and out. They have to do all their pre-tire work for us, um, then they have to have their training, so we're doing training for them as well, as well as the staff up there. So this is to continue, uh, Riley's been working thirty-five hours, could probably put in more hours consistently. But we kinda wanted to keep her under the New Hampshire Retirement System requirements of considering somebody, if they're hitting over a year mark. Uh, the New Hampshire Retirement System decides to do an audit, we have somebody that's consistently worked thirty-five hours from twelve months to twelve months. And then we'd be owing them the New Hampshire Retirement System.
So I understand why you need the position, the part that I don't understand is how do we swap out an LNA position, would we need a hundred more? Already, I just like that, that was the part that just didn't.
Yeah, Jason and I talked about that, I could have put this in for a whole new position, but considering the budget and some of the other stuff that was going through. This year, um, Jason and I talked about it, while he needs, while he has opened seventy-eight or seventy-nine uh, LNA's. We have never filled seventy-nine LNA's, even if you had them to capacity, there would not be a need for seventy-nine LNA's.
So, but we didn't fund seventy-nine LNA's either.
Did not, but.
Technically, yes, but not at full dollars.
But not at full dollars.
So it's a paper position going to, we're just reutilizing that position to streamline.
I thought it would. Are we utilizing AP?
We're usually utilizing a full funded one.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping, because.
We're utilizing.
So you're taking that out of the budget, is really where it's.
You'll see, yes.
And Jake can, can chime in, um, cuz that was a discussion back in, for a bit, up until just Monday. No discussions.
Thank, thank you, Commissioners, um, and Alison, so, you know, I, I've been struggling with this and. We, we're recruiting on every two weeks, yeah, close to a hundred and fifty travelers every year. And the amount of paperwork to do that is unreal, now, would I love to have a recruiter just to bring on new staff coming in? Absolutely, and maybe that's something that's down the road, but you know. Right now. In order to. Keep. Our residents safe and provide care, we need to bring in these agency, and that additional workload and the compliance piece with that is just taxing. And um, and talking with Alison and Chuck and really trying to figure out the best economical way of doing this. While not pulling my staff educator and other clerical staff to be focusing on recruitment efforts. Then let's have it moved over to Human Resources, um, you know. Maybe we examine this role every year, and then eventually, hopefully, if the labor market changes with nursing staff. Then maybe it's phased out, or it's changed, or maybe the position comes back over here, I'm not sure. But I know that right now, the current need is that there is. A hundred and fifty employees that are brought on here, agency staff, travelers, every year. And the amount of paperwork, and, and I don't even know, uh, for HR, from your perspective, how many people do you onboard every year as well? Uh, is it a hundred and fifty employees that you bring on within a year? So the amount of paperwork and the amount of compliance that this one person does is probably more than the county does recruitment-wise in itself. From the compliance standpoint. So it, it requires a lot.
So we're like onboarding every thirteen weeks, or, or, more or less?
Every two weeks, it's every two days, because the cycles are all different, everybody's thirteen-week cycles are different.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a.
Even better.
It's not soft.
And it's probably back sometimes, hey, we squeeze them in the cycle, we got to land a hook down, then it's very good going, and it passed, it was like, no, now it's like. Alright, you got somebody, look, we're gonna work to get them in.
Yeah.
I, I mean, there's no doubt there's a need, unfortunately, and, and I, you know, so.
Alright, so we're ready to vote, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes. Alright, so now, uh, registrar, registrar deeds, Captain Stacy, line item transfer.
I moved to approve a line item transfer request in the amount three thousand dollars stated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from non-expendable equipment to book restoration as recommended by the students.
Second.
Motion remain and seconded, discussion?
Just good budget planning.
Hearing not, uh, nothing additional, uh, Commissioner Gado, Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes.
I vote yes, okay, we're on to department head updates, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to June Gates first. Go ahead, June, how are you?
Good morning, I'm well, thank you, how's everyone?
Good.
Um, I have a small item to bring up on a new business, unless you want me to do it now and you don't have to come back to me.
The resolution?
Yes.
Great, we're gonna get a four three fifty instead of a two fifty?
Yes, we are, for the same money.
Great.
That's okay.
What can you do to get me into a business?
Alright, um, if, do you have other things, Jude, because I'm happy to go to the um, solution, if you wanna.
I, just the usual, we're crazy busy wrapping up budget, we've had a, a whole bunch of site visits this week. Trying to get some projects rolling now that the weather's starting to break, things are going really well at the new building, the crane should be out of here next week. Um, they're working inside in the community corrections side, um, because it's all undercover now. So, um, things are progressing very well, we're getting, you know, closer and closer with all of the permitting issues, but it's still. You know, a daily. Process, um, but other than that, things are going well, thank you.
Alright.
Jude, what are you gonna do when the building's done?
I'm, I'm gonna take a couple of days off.
I can't imagine what your hourly is right now, thank you for everything you're doing. We're so grateful.
You wanna read that?
Sure. So, um, I'm gonna proceed with the lease reimbursement resolution approved. And this is the resolution of the Board of Commissioners, County of Rockham, New Hampshire, declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of lease financing for certain equipment. The Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockham, New Hampshire, the county has determined that it may be necessary or desirable to advance money to pay the cost of acquiring. Three twenty-twenty-three Chevy Tahoe four-wheel drive police vehicles and one twenty-twenty-four Ford Transit three fifty low roof all-wheel drive van. And one twenty-twenty-three Ford F three fifty pickup truck with plow attachment, collectively the equipment. Now therefore be, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockham, New Hampshire, one, the Board of Commissioners adopts this declaration of intent, official intent. Two, the Board of Commissioners reasonably expects to reimburse advances made or to be made by the county to pay the cost of acquiring the equipment from the proceeds of certain lease financing. With TV Equipment Finance Incorporated. The maximum amount of financing expected to be issued by in one or more series for the equipment is two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The vendor supplied the, supplying the equipment to whom monies would be advanced by, the county is for ponyboard, one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars total. And McMoulton Chevrolet, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars total. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption and supersedes the lease reimbursement resolution previously adopted. On March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, wait, no, on March, what was the?
This is, this is the.
Yeah, previously, yeah.
It was November.
November, previously adopted on. I'm sorry, the prior one was uh, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so on the amended resolution, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Sorry, the foregoing resolution was adopted at its March meeting on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Yes.
On the amended resolution, Commissioner Gado?
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
And now we can pay for that last vehicle and I can work, I can be that capital lease arrangement.
Alright, I'm gonna go to Captain Stacy.
Good morning. First, I wanna say, you know, you see my background, today's opening day. And partner, I don't know if you can see him, says, hey, go Red Sox.
Alright. Most important people in the world, grandkids.
So we uh, brought on a new employee on Monday, so we're pretty pleased about that. We filled, filled a position with the help, obviously, of, of Autumn in the finance department. Um, we had a big cash sale uh, in Newcastle, three point five million dollars for a condo, for a condo.
Condo?
Yeah, for a condo. Um, and uh, I just want, you know, I just might, I want to just comment a discussion about insurance and the talk, the discussion about, you know, we're stewards for the taxpayers. And I just, I'm wondering, I'm curious if you're looking at not being self insured and going to the pool again. Because, you know, I mean, I think you'd need to, if you're saying you really are worried about the taxpayers, I think that you need to look at all options other than just uh, Gallagher. Okay, so I'm just putting it out there, just, just putting it out there. Other than that, um, we're working, we're doing our thing and I appreciate um, you doing my line item transfer and I hope you guys all have a wonderful Easter.
Thank you, Kim.
Kathy, I have a question for you.
Sure.
What's your uh, feeling on the NARS or opinion that came out and that how it's gonna change the, you know, do you think we're gonna see impacts of it in the next fiscal year on sales because, you know, it pretty much eliminates buyers?
I know, it's crazy, isn't it? I think, and I think it's gonna have a huge impact, I really do. I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm waiting for the rates to go down. I mean, I'm, I hate what I'm seeing, you know, obviously, we have, we still have activity. But um, yeah, I, I just think that that's really gonna have a negative impact. I mean, don't you, don't you agree, Commissioner?
I, I think it's gonna wipe out, I mean, the, the attrition of realtors is gonna be substantial. And then going forward, I, what it means for, I think the people who are gonna be most impacted are first time home buyers. So we won't see nearly the level of first time home buyers because buyer, you know, those are the individuals who most need realtors and aren't gonna have the money to more, to, because you can't put that into mortgages and so.
No, exactly. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. I mean, when you, you know, think about how they're struggling just to get the twen, you know, the twenty percent down or whatever, right? Because that's what they require. And to think that they're gonna have to now pay a commission on top of that, I mean, come on, it's just crazy. I think it's crazy.
I mean, I think most people are just gonna go without realtors, buyer's agents, right?
That's right. Probably, yeah, yeah, you're right.
I don't know.
We'll see.
Alright, Jason Smith, how you doing?
I am well, thank you for asking, Commissioner. Alright, let's see here. Uh, we continue with uh, no COVID um, or flu between the two communities, so we're very happy about that. Um, in this week's packet, I provided you with the uh, new hospice brochure um, for reference. Uh, and I'll just jump over to, uh, just to say thank you once again to the commissioners for allowing this to happen for our residents in the community. Um, as you all have seen, the um, overwhelming um, support for this dedicated area. Um, it will pro, provide and bring comfort to the residents and the family in a time that is very needed um, at end of life. And so the hospice agencies um, are very um, just impressed that um, our community is doing something like this and it's definitely going to be um, something within Rockingham County and beyond. Um, I, I received, uh, I was on the phone with Ray Bauer over at Strafford and he said he doesn't want any competition uh, between Rockingham and Strafford, so.
Well, he's, he's retiring soon anyway, isn't he?
He'll never retire.
Isn't it wonderful? I mean, like, I think there's enough uh, need that we can all play the same.
I, I would also like to uh, provide a shout out to um, Jude and her team for um, not only dealing with my uh, time management of uh, of trying to get things done, but you know, the ongoing weekly call with Jude, say, where's this, where's that? So thank you, Jude, for putting up with uh, me and um, I really appreciate your team um, through that project. So thanks so much.
Jason, sorry to interrupt you. I didn't, I thought you were done. Did you take, were you, who took the pictures for the brochure? It looks beautiful.
So that was, that was part of, we budgeted uh, within um, our marketing budget for that. Uh, so um, uh, we have a videographer as well that will add the tour to our website, so family members and community members can actually see the dedicated area.
Very good.
Um, let's see here. Uh, next week, we have uh, F S A Compliance Group for uh, part of our compliance plan. They'll be here on site to do a review. Um, in addition to that, uh, C M S has released new regulations on enhanced barrier precautions. So we have implemented new training. Um, we will also have to purchase new P P E because it will, will be burning through a lot more uh, moving forward now with these new standards that will be in place. I also want to make the announcement that after forty eight years of dedicated service to the county here at the nursing home, Harry Richard will be retiring um, on May third. We will be holding a celebration for him um, in the Water Cafe. So uh, Water Cafe, there will be more information, but please, you're all welcome to attend. Thank you. Have a good day.
We gotta listen on social land. I'm gonna go to Jason Henry. Did I catch off, guy?
No.
I need those.
Uh, I'm reporting, I'm reporting in house right now. Um, no COVID, which is good. Um, been working a lot in the budget. Budget, um, negotiations, uh, this past, the last Monday, the hundred and twenty second um, academy started. That's going well. Today and yesterday, there are sergeant board going on. Uh, we have three really good candidates going for one position, so hopefully, we'll see how that comes out, but they're all three good candidates. I did get my stuff in for the earmark. I just need two letters, which I will write to the commissioner, see if they'll, one of the letters and I'll get something from somebody else.
Yeah, is it like a, a participating town that they want?
No, it's just gonna be letters from anybody from supporting the project.
I'd like to have Commissioner Foyle write one of these. So it would do that.
I don't know, so, and they told me, uh, I can get it afterwards. I talked to Chuck Henderson and stuff. He said, just get it afterwards. I'm like, okay. Um, yesterday, I was in Concord testifying on, um, there's a uh, trying to do, change the nature constitution, adding in the slavery section or no slavery section. That was a lot of fun. Um, because some impact could be that the way it's written, we wouldn't be able to use our sentenced inmates for um, say, washing dishes, those kinds of things, because it'd be considered, could be considered slavery. So there was a lot of heated discussion in that room. Um, A C L U's, the civil rights people. And unfortunately, I had to go after a very angry gentleman. I, and, and speak, um, it's a little uncomfortable, but at the end of the day, we got through it and then I made some nice friends with the civil rights people. We had some really good discussions outside afterwards. Um, and I think we'll be able to put some language in that will, won't be an impact. So, but me and Toyota Supertens went down, it was just usually not uncomfortable, but that was very uncomfortable yesterday.
Okay, even more than uh, last year's um?
Yeah, yeah, more than that.
Okay.
More than that. Uh, so um, the, 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 the last thing is uh, three strong is, I just wanna remind the commissioners, I don't know, I haven't talked to sheriff yet, if he's still, if they're rotating any vehicles out of their fleet this year that
Yeah.
that we talk about keeping some. Um, I mean, I personally like humanize staff, so, so, could we go to the academy and trainings and stuff and not paying mileage? It's, I found in the past, it was cheaper. So um, then you don't get a lot of money when you sell them out, you just strip them down and the counties can, can use them. I, in this new contract, that we put in there, that contract is, your first choice is taking a vehicle first, having a vehicle first before any other options to save money. So I just wanna keep your mind on as we go along with, we're getting rid of them, just to, just to think about if the county would like to keep some.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Great idea.
Um, and that is all I have.
Great. Alright, Autumn, since she's not here all time, let's chime in this. Let us know how heard you always.
Yeah, so we've, we've had really great activity these past few months. It's been very busy. Um, facilities is trending really well. Just recently, we've hired their building and grounds technician, two shift technicians, and the master plumber started on Monday.
Yay.
Yeah, so.
We got a plumber.
Yeah.
That's so long.
Yeah, and I have an interview for a master plumber just after this meeting as well, so. Fingers crossed. Um, but that's trending really well. We also hired a per D M R N, a per D M personal care partner. And as um, Kathy had mentioned, we hired for a recording clerk. Um, in the works, we have a part time L P N for the nursing home as well. A couple of L N As as well as Jude's motor services technician. So um, lots of departments have activity. Assisted living and corrections continue to be trending fairly well and they continue to fill more openings. Um, dispatch as well, they're, they're working through their last bit of openings as well. So we're, we're getting there for sure. Um, but other than that, I've been, it's job fair season, so I've been busy at some job fairs, um, attended U N H, Raymond High School, Pinkerton and um, L N A health care is recently as well, so.
Is there anything you need from us to help you with uh, any of your, your, your open houses and whatnot? Is?
I, I don't think so. I, I, the software was the biggest thing. I appreciate that very much. It's gonna be so, so helpful, but um, otherwise, it's, it's, we've had some good activities.
That's great. I mean, considering over the last few years, the, what we, what we've been able to do since Autumn came on board as well, it looks like we've really turned that corner. Uh, which kudos to, to that, uh, her team and Allison's team over there, uh, which is great news. Uh, now we just, now we're just gonna get the nurses, but that's gonna be a little bit longer process. We all understand that, but keep up the good work.
I mean, I think it's a good point, Commissioner, that we, you know, it's like chipping away at everything, really. I mean, I guess.
And. We can, I mean, we came on board together and we, we knew the, the issues three years ago where it, it really seemed kind of blue. But we've made some.
The, yeah, exactly. Like, it is one, like, one department at a time. It's been a great work, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, we'll turn here next.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna go to Allison.
Um, it's just our department's been busy. I've been working on the H R budget. I'll go back to that this afternoon now and revise some stuff there. I got the legal bills reconciled. Um, I had prepared for the bid waiver. We've had some, um, I've had some follow up with Gallagher on the changes and recommendations, so I can start bringing forward those motions uh, for some of that. I mean, we're not changing from Cigna, we're not changing from um, what these Delta Dental, Colonial, all of those uh, will go forward, but the majority of the time has been spent on negotiations, kind of following up on um, the documentation for that. And the three M O Us went out to the union groups on the inmate hospital stays and related transports. So I'm hoping to get those back so that you would be able to sign them next week and those will be completely executed for an April seventh kickoff date for that. So it's, it's been busy and a lot of meetings between Jason and uh, Chuck's team and Chuck and I. Um, we still have some U K G. We are now going to be um, moving into um, implementation of our uh, of our um, paperless uh, scanning records management. So all the personnel files in the county will be um, in through a paperless system and um, the supervisors and managers will have access twenty four seven to all the documentation and then there'll be bridges for employees to be able to access their personnel files um, remotely, um, for, you know, there's all sorts of bells and whistles on this for um, security and stuff, but um, that will be a process we're putting in place. So um, Katie Kenyon is, is very excited because she's just been kinda um, hovering around, waiting for us to get through our payroll and H R I S system and time of attendance, so she could not stop uh, get that implemented. So we're excited about that for her. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Chuck?
Obviously, it's uh, like departmental budget week, I guess you could say. Um, so budgets, 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 obviously payroll, uh, retirement system stuff. We had some updates to the uh, U K G interface files, so I hope those go okay because uh, February's file that was submitted for this month was a lot of fun. Um, because it was two different payroll systems, so it was fun bringing it together. Um, like Allison said, negotiations and uh, and M O Us, uh, it'd be nice to get those M O Us all set and approved in time for the next uh, you know, biweekly pay dates. Um, obviously, grant items still continue as well. We'll come up on a deadline for um, I think it's basically a routine submission due for that E U C B G, one regarding solar. Um, state New Hampshire D O T, sorry, D O E did come back saying, well, don't just do it for some of the panels, it's easier to apply it against the designer engineering. So Emily's reaching back out to Nate, I believe that's his name, uh, Jude, can correct me, yeah? Nate at Revision Energy to try to pinpoint specifically some portion of the designer engineering piece.
This is for the direct payment piece?
The two, no, that's different. So the direct pay piece, um, the, the buy America portion does really apply to that.
No.
So that's not, but there's still an up to six percent credit that is part of the um, direct paid piece that's um, if you do not, not fully certified perils like Davis Bacon, but if we can get some sort of information from uh, from Revision and whoever they might subcontract out to that's working on solar, that can provide information on that they meet at least the prevailing wage.
Okay.
Um, you know, so it's a much lower threshold or, or as far as, you know, documentation as we've provided. But that could be an up to six percent, so obviously up to six percent on ten million is still nice to have as well.
Go get it.
Yeah, so we are still, you know, going after all avenues. Um, as far as those other other, whether the communities or counties are relying that, on that full like thirty percent credit, I mean, buy America comes into play.
I didn't see that piece of it, but I don't know if I, I may have not get all of it.
Well, I, I, what I'm thinking about is that the federal congressional, you know, staffers, I don't, you know, it's all the fine print stuff.
Yeah.
That they probably want more broadcast out, oh, that's third side credit, not that. Oh, but you have the, it's buy American and what is that gonna do to your timing and cost of actually getting your project done? So.
Um, not to change the subject or anything, but do we know we have those panels are coming from?
They're not U S, they're, no. I believe they're.
We know that for a fact, though.
I'm pretty, I'll, Jude, if you've talked to Dan, uh, I, I'm pretty sure they're probably Chinese, if I had a guess.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there's a really viable um, production of panels in the U S right now.
Okay. Alright, I'm sorry to.
Now, it's. Um, but again, we're looking for, you know, all avenues as far as, you know, getting grant funds to, to offset that overall ten million cost. And obviously, if we're able to do that, then that frees up
Yeah.
for the lost revenue for other portions of the new municipal building cost. So, or if even for other purposes too.
Good.
So we just have to make sure we get everything, obviously obligated, you know, by the end of this calendar year. So um, again, this overall busy. Again, I pay departments, need any help with their operating budgets. Um, there were a few departments when I was going through apparel projections. I did have a few very minor tweaks, but I'll reissue or I'll send around the updated one, um, based upon what the commissioners group today actually sent out, a new nursing department one and a new H R department uh, projection. Uh, but I have been getting in, I think as of what the scenarios were up through before this morning's meeting, I did get all the uh, payroll projected numbers actually into um, the Venus Budget Central.
Nice.
Thank you.
So that was actually.
Really good. Wow, thank you.
And the budget went down. I said the budget went down.
All but yours now.
Jason, we need to have a meeting.
Alright, so I think we, I get everybody, I believe.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go to public comment. I didn't see anybody from the public, but I just gonna call it out. I don't see anybody. But we, uh, we've done public, Allison?
We do, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna go into non-public. Commissioner Foyle will write a mo, do a motion.
Yes, go ahead. Uh, so the, Broncare actually sent the contract, the second email actually says the correct contract. So if you want to put it on next, next week's agenda, let's try, but you have the contract now.
Alright, great.
Okay, I move to enter into non-public, person ninety one A, colon, three, section two, personnel matters. And first up is Allison. Jason, uh, you're going too. Do you wanna come down? Oh, he's gone already.
Can I get a second?
Do we hear a second? Um, all of the things I.
Hi.
Alright, non-public.
Alright, everybody. Have a, have a great holiday, if you celebrate.
Recording. I move to seal the minutes. We came out, we are in non-public, we're back in public session. And I move to seal the minutes indefinitely because it, um, with respect to, we actually had three different uh, topics of discussion and in all instances, it could render a proposed action ineffective.
three different uh topics of discussion and in all instances, it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Second. All right, motion's been made and second, the discussion. I don't think the last one should be under uh sealed minutes permanently because it affects commissioners. Uh, and I think that that should be an open, transparent issue, but we'll see how you vote. So on the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
And I vote no because a issue that's dealing with commissioners and compensation should be only open. So, two one.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.